Good start. Welcome to the May 14, 2012 work session. Work sessions are more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken on work session items. Tonight, there are two items on the agenda. And we don't have any public comment, do we? So the city clerk will please sound first agenda item.
First item is update regarding transportation federal funding. This is being presented by Mr. Carter Lucas.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, we wanted to go back through, a little bit of a rehash on our, some of our federal funding projects. And this is something that we talked about, really, a couple of years ago, almost two years ago. And what we had talked about at that point was our HPP funds, our high priority project funds. And these are some funds that have been allocated. They were originally allocated to Fulton County to deal with congestion in projects near Georgia 400. Those funds were then turned over to the City of Milton when we incorporated. And those had been allocated to a number of different projects. And that particular fund is what we're doing. The projects at 372 in Providence, New Providence, State Route 140 in New Providence, and the Crab Apple project, also funded the CTP. And so I'll go back a little bit over that. And really, through this discussion, if there's anything that jumps out at you, please let us know. Sarah will talk a little bit about the L-230 funds, which is another source of funding that has come up this year that we're looking at a couple of projects on, and she'll go through that a little bit. A little bit different with the L-230, they're funds that are awarded by ARC. All of the projects have to be included in the TIP. And since 2004, they haven't had a call for projects. And this year, they've done a call for projects on a limited scope that we've been dealing with the other North Fulton cities with, and Sarah will go through that in just a few minutes. But if you go back through our discussion in June of 2010, and frankly, it doesn't seem like it was almost two years ago that we had that discussion. What we started that with was there was an excess in funding in that particular account. We had originally started with about $9.1 million. The allocations in funding left us with about $1.5 million that we were looking to apply to some other projects. That original funding had six projects associated with it, the CTP, and three projects that we've got underway with the 372, the 140, and the Crab Apple projects. And then two projects at Freemanville in Providence and Bethany at Providence that were on that list but weren't funded under that. And so we looked at some alternatives at how to assign that $1.5 million. And part of it was to expand the Crab Apple project. When we originally started that, that was the Mayfield Mid-Broadwell project. There wasn't a whole lot of definition to it, but it had something to do with project improvements right there, in particular to the intersection. And in that discussion, what we wanted to do was assign some dollars to look at the overall Crab Apple master plan and the transportation routes that were associated with that, and that's one of the things that we did. We've been working forward on that Northwest Connector Road. That was part of the master plan, as well as some intersection projects there. And so those, that additional $1.5 million went, went towards that particular project. One of the things we also talked about in that was the use of the HPP dollars to fund the roundabouts at 100%. I know we, they have always had some discussion about GDOT's ability to fund those roundabouts at 100%. Just wasn't possible with those HPP funds. Those fundings for the roundabouts come out of the L-230 funds, and so we weren't able to fund our local matches on the, on the two roundabout projects with those funds. We did do apply to some additional funds to the Crab Apple project. We looked at the Bethany at Providence, which was originally a roundabout under Fulton County, and the Freemanville at Providence, which is originally a signalized intersection under Fulton County. Both of those projects had started with some federal funds and had, at least through preliminary plans, completed on those before they stopped. And so if you looked at the projects that we were working on, the ones in gray are intersection projects. This overall slide is one from the CTP that shows the project, intersection projects that were identified and the CTP is needing to be addressed. The projects in gray are locally funded projects. And so we've done a pretty substantial, in the first couple of years of the CTP, done a pretty good job of starting to really address these intersections throughout the city. And the key intersections here, these, we've talked about these a little bit last week, but if you look at the key intersections, the Birmingham at Hopewell is one that we're getting ready to get into design on. Cockburn at Bethany, we're getting ready to get under construction with. State Road 140 at Cox was one that GDOT was working on. Hopewell Francis Cockburn is another one that we're working on locally and moving towards right-of-way acquisition on that. Freemanville at Providence and the Hopewell at Bethany's was one that we had talked about last week, kind of working on that east-west connectivity. Now that we've got the school coming in, which really wasn't contemplated when the CTP was done, would be one that we're probably moving up on the list here in the next year or two. Either through federal funding or local funding, just depending on what, what dollars are And again, under the HPP funds, they just weren't permitted to be used for 100% on the roundabout, so we've proceeded with those projects under the HPP, the 80/20 split that we've been doing. In order to move that to the L-230 funds, just would have delayed the projects significantly, and we just didn't want to do that. Both those projects needed to keep moving. We did look at the Crab Apple project, and we increased, increased that funding to account for that Northwest Connector Route. And we still are showing approximately a million dollars in HPP funds remaining. As we work through construction also on some of these, or move these projects to construction, some of the local matches that we're required to maintain because of the way GDOT calculates construction costs moving through. What we're seeing is we're actually getting to construction, and some of those dollars are becoming real, is we've probably got about $340,000 in excess local funds that we'll also be able to reallocate. At this point, we're going to leave those dollars in those particular projects until we actually get through right-of-way acquisition and make sure that those were budget appropriately. But it looks like we will have an excess fund in those particular projects. So that's kind of a rehash of where we are on the HPP projects. As we move forward through those, and Sarah will talk about some of the projects a little bit in her presentation, but as we move forward, we'll be looking to get a final allocation on that $1 million, as well as some of the additional local matches that we have as we, as we get a little bit closer to construction and get a finalized number on where we are as far as any additional funds that may be available in those accounts to allocate to other projects. But the other projects, or the other call for projects that we've just had recently from ARC is for L-230. And as I mentioned, it's been, since 2004, since they had a call for projects on that. It's a limited scope on this particular one, and so they really wanted the cities of North Fulton to get together and really find some projects that would benefit the region. And Sarah's been working on that, and I'll let her kind of step you through that particular process. And if you have any questions or comments, as you guys do that, please feel free to bring those forward.
So for about the past month, we've been working with the other North Fulton cities as ARC released this call for projects. They've asked for each county and North Fulton as a group to prioritize, prioritize the list of projects for, for that area. They're going to award a limited, limited number of projects per county, so they've said to limit the projects to about 20 for the whole, whole area. They are anticipating a future call for projects over the next couple of years, and so there, there will be another chance to most likely prioritize the list again with, with the North Fulton cities. We're not sure if they'll keep the criteria, the dollars amounts for each program the same, or the, the methods for selecting the projects. But for this first round, they're looking for projects that are pretty much shovel-ready or, or some type of study that can be completed within about a year and a half from the award of projects. So like I said, North Fulton would have one prioritized list that we would submit to ARC. There's four different funding programs. One's a bike and pedestrian. There's a freight operations and safety, and a general operations and safety, and then a transit. And these projects can be infrastructure, or they can be studies, like I said, just to be able to complete in a short timeframe. This is also a, a map from the CTP. And I wanted to point out on this one that the, the green lines are the, the minor arterial road classifications in the city. Those are going to be our higher volume roadways. And you can see most of the projects that are underway are along these, these routes. And then the red circles are what, the projects that we've identified as potentials for federal This map came out of ARC's program criteria for the L-230 funds. This shows the ARC's classification of roadways. And you can see the, there is a circle at, that's the nine at Bethany intersection, where State Route 9, south of Bethany and Bethany Bend are both classified as regional thoroughfares. And then nine north of Bethany is a level three of the thoroughfares. And the other two projects are, are considered minor, on minor roadways. So just to step through those three projects that we are, we've identified for the use of federal funds. Out of the LCI project, a idea for a supplemental study came out of the recommendations. We started looking at potential improvements for nine at Bethany, and through the LCI process, we weren't able to really define what improvements would be needed there. So as part of the LCI, identified really studying that area and determining the, the improvements for that, it'd look at alignment, and then also some potential for redevelopment based on, on the alignments that, that are decided on. Freemanville at Providence was started with Fulton County, and can see the, those dollar figures are what came out of the approved concept, and it's proposed as a traffic signal currently. At that time, the criteria for roundabouts, it's changed since, since that concept was done, and so this would most likely now meet the roundabout criteria. It does have an approved concept, an approved environmental, and is in preliminary plan stage, but would need to be reevaluated based on the new roundabout guidelines. Bethany at Providence is about in the same, same stage of the, the plans. It does have an approved concept, approved environmental, and those are the dollar figures that were in the concept report through Fulton County. So like I said, we've been working with the North Fulton cities, and based on the criteria for this call for projects, we feel like our best, best approach for getting a project selected is to first go after the concept study for State Route 9 at Bethany, and then the intersection at Providence, Freemanville, and then Bethany at Providence. And then to touch back to the HPP projects, we would wait to, to see if one or more of our L-230 projects received any funding. And as we work through the Crab Apple project, to get the detailed cost estimates associated with that, and make any adjustments to the, the funding that's allocated for each phase of that project. And then to look to put the additional HPP funds to the two intersections.
We expect to hear from ARC in July of this year regarding the L-230 funds and whether or not they, we were able to fund up Bethany Highway 9 study. And that's it.
Question for Sarah Carter.
Is this where we can offer ideas on other projects too, or is it just?
Yeah, I think what we wanted to do is just kind of bring back to, circle back around after a couple of years here, and just let you know that, you know, from, from a staff standpoint, as we attend some of these meetings and they start to call for projects, our, our real plan is to follow the approved plans, the CTP, and any other LCI studies that may be out there. And then bring, kind of bring them back through here, just to make sure that we're all still on board and we're still, that's, that's the right project approach to take. So at this point, we're just kind of circling back around, let you know that we're moving forward with the CTP, give you a little bit of update on where we are with a lot of the projects that were in CTP. And just to see if you had any feedback on these projects, or if there were other projects that we needed to look at and address in any of these processes.
Mayor.
Yeah, please.
So going through this, the Bethany Bend Highway 9 intersection study is high on the list of trying to at least do a study of possible realignment.
That's correct.
To, to fix that acute angle there. I wholeheartedly agree with that, since it's the intersection I go through almost every day. Also, with the possibility of the new interchange.
That's correct.
McFarland, um, not McFarland, but McGinnis Ferry and 400. I think it's prudent to start looking at that intersection and seeing how, what we can do in terms of, even though it's signalized, it's still a difficult intersection to negotiate.
That's right. With the relatively short project duration that ARC placed on this particular call for projects, we felt like that was probably our best bet to be able to get that awarded.
I'll agree with you on that one.
Bill?
What's, you mentioned the northwest quadrant of Crab Apple.
The Northwest Connector Road?
Right.
Yes, sir.
How about plans for the northeast and the southeast portions?
Well, they're certainly in the master plan, not, not funded at this point. We looked at both of those. The Northwest Connector was probably the best bang for our buck as prob, as far as transportation improvements. And so we really focused our efforts on that. The Northeast Connector is one that has the potential with some environmental issues with the historical house right at the end of Charlotte. And so you just look at extended delays and working through that permitting process. But I think after we finish this Northwest Connector project, we get substantially into it, that could certainly be one that is looked at in the future.
Timing wise, where would you see it coming up?
Well, we're looking to move the Northwest Connector forward. That goes to construction in 2014, I believe. And so I think, as Sarah mentioned, once we get through the concept design and get a little bit better handle on construction cost estimates with that, so we know what, exactly what our excess funding is, that's when we would come back around and try and reallocate those funds. Our initial thought on that would be to move them to the two current projects, the Freemanville at Providence, or the Bethany at Providence projects. But we would have the ability to move those to, to other projects also. With the northeast, because it's federally funded, you know, you just run into so many environmental issues and processes to go through. If you have the ability to fund those locally, particularly those that may have historical implications, it's, it's much faster to do that locally if we have the ability to do
As far as getting together an overall list, because I know we have money coming from different sources, and we have to be careful which money we use for what because of the different rules related to it. If the transportation T-Squash passes, will it have some of these restraints to it, or will it be more open as to how we spend the money? Because I'd really love to see an overall list of all the projects that we would like to get done, and, you know, so we can start whittling away. I've actually been working on the Freemanville and Providence and Bethany at Providence now for at least 12 to 15 years. So, you know, I would love to see some of these actually get, get finalized at some point in time. And I know with the east-west, with the new high school coming in, that Bethany has got to, at Highway 9, it's going to be a priority, and any east-west traffic we have is also going to be a real, moving that east-west traffic's going to be a priority.
Well, and that's a good point, and that's one of the last things we just wanted to touch on, too. The TIA money is not considered federal dollars. And so those dollars will be treated more like local funds. The one project that we have on there that's identified is the State Route 140 widening. The remainder of the project will be done through our discretionary funds, which we could be seeing up to three-quarters of a million dollars per year with those discretionary funds, at which point we'll have the ability to use those as we see fit. We're working right now on trying to put together a list of projects that would be suitable for that funding. And I think what we wanted to do tonight was just to get a little bit of feedback from you, too. Because we have the option to do that, we can, one, use that money every year and focus on intersection improvements. And we can look at all of the intersections, get them into design and construction as best we can. Or we can split those dollars up, and we can do some intersection improvements, we can do some bridge projects, we can do some trails with that. So it really just depends on how, how we want to use those dollars locally. And what we were hoping to do is kind of get a little bit of feedback from you tonight on whether or not we wanted to focus all those dollars on intersection improvements, or spread them out over a variety of different projects, and then we can work on what that project list looks like.
I'm glad you mentioned the trails, because that was my next question, was does it have to be just intersections? You know, I mean, obviously, we have some questions as far as different roadways, mainly from the safety perspective, just the bicyclists, you know, being on the road, we talked about that, too. Another intersection I think that has some dangerous implications is actually Hopewell on Red Road in the morning. I don't know if you ever thought about that or had that on the list. It's the same type of problem as Birmingham Road and Hopewell. Just the same exact traffic patterns, et cetera, just, you know, people flying down. So whatever our priority list is, I think safety is the way to go first, because we have some issues, we got to get them done there. And we should consider not just the intersections in that process.
I don't know that that one was ever brought up in the CTP, was it?
It was identified as needing some sort of improvement. It didn't make the, the list of, I think it shows up on...
Oh, that first slide?
That one.
And also, you know, that...
Potential roundabout?
Yeah.
The, also the Hopewell and then the Bethany area, that's been, obviously, there's a odd section there in the house there and all that, it's kind of...
That is, that is one that's identified and one that we'll probably move up, at least from a concept design stage, to try and address that east-west connectivity. What they come up with on that one will be interesting.
It'll be interesting.
So, you know, before we give you guys feedback, I guess you were asking, do we want to look at different options? And then have you come up with the options? Staff come up with the options?
That, that's right. We have a list of projects that covers all of those different things that we can include. And the list is by no means a final list. That, that list can change at any time. But I think what we want to do is because those discretionary funds are so important for a community like us, we don't have a lot of big projects on the main regional list, I think it'll be important for us to get that, that potential project list out there so people can see what the improvements can happen at a local level, not just on the regional level. And so we were hoping to put the list together of potential projects here prior to the vote at some point, just so we can demonstrate that there's going to be a lot of improvements locally, not just under the whole regional aspect of the tax. So if we, if we want to mix that list up, we can put that list together. If we want to focus on one and try and just fund the others locally, we, that's an all option, too.
Well, I think probably, if you can, myself and council, you know, would you guys want to see some of the options, the list for, to take a look at that? Or are you looking for us to throw out ideas of?
Not ideas of projects, just whether or not you want to see them all as intersection projects, or a mix of intersection trail, bridge projects. And we'll put the list together.
I just want to get clear what you're asking.
I mean, personally, I think intersections is what, and moving traffic is what affects people the most. And if you're looking at, at, if you would ask people what they were most concerned about, I think most of them would say, I'm concerned about the intersection and traffic more so than they would say bridges. So it may be we're better off funding the bridges through our own means and, and using this money and letting them know this money would be spent for these intersection improvements over the next, you know, 10 years, and this is what the improvements would be.
Certainly more visible projects when you talk about intersections and trails and things than, than bridges.
Well, it would minimize a bridge project, so I know there's still several of them out there that are...
That's correct.
...long-term.
They would still need to be done.
Yeah. That can really, that disrupt more traffic than something happening at an intersection as a bridge failure.
Which is a good reminder that we'll be closing Cockburn this Saturday to begin that project.
And I would say that any, along those lines, any bridge projects, if we did any aren't impeding any traffic flow as they stand, it's not like we would, you know, have a four-lane road going into a two-lane bridge. So I think intersection would be good. When, as far as intersections go, when is our first roundabout supposed to be functioning? And is that going to be the, the Providence at 372?
The first one probably would be Hopewell Francis Cockburn.
And, you know, I'm not a fan of, of roundabouts, so I would like to see us one, have one functioning before we go, you know, full bore into every intersection. No, I'm not saying they're not going to function, but, but, you know, just as an aside.
We're moving to right-of-way acquisition on Hopewell Francis Cockburn, so we're a little bit ahead probably of 372, Providence, New Providence.
And that's all under our control, the Hopewell Francis, Francis Cockburn?
Yes, sir.
So that, in theory, would go a little smoother anyway.
Hopefully.
Do you have any other...
I'm for the intersection, so.
Intersections.
I mean, the bridges are important, but let's use our, our internal money for that, and use the intersection improvements for the high profile.
You're hearing a lot of intersections. Anybody got anything else they want to throw out there?
We'll push those that direction.
Good.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, city clerk wants to call the next item.
Next item is discussion of assembling and activating City of Milton Public Facilities Authority, presented by Ken Gerard.
Mayor, members of the council, just got some informational items for you this evening. I think all of it's going to be good news and very pragmatic news as well. As you know, the City of Milton in 2007 was granted by way of local enactment, a public facilities authority. I'd say that's good news, because some jurisdictions have been asking for those for years and don't have them, and you do have one. What you don't have is an active public facilities authority. In other words, you have never sort of done those things, assembled it, created it, sort of like we did with the charter commission and other agencies that have created it. You have to do things to actually get them assembled and functioning and working and meeting, things of that nature. Well, an issue has come up of late that has sort of thrust upon the city, an idea that perhaps going ahead and triggering, the PFA may, may make some sense. Let me explain what occurred. First of all, we are renegotiating the lease of our city hall with the landlord. An issue came, or arose with respect to the multi-year lease component of Georgia law. And that is, of course, like most commercial landlords, they want a multi-year lease. Unfortunately, under Georgia law, municipalities, just like counties, can't really enter into multi-year leases. There is magical language within the statute that requires that leases lasting more than one year. There's some, there's some magic language that can do it, but a lot of times, to some folks, it's, it's unsatisfactory. For instance, it says that a multi-year lease must end absolutely with no obligation on the party municipality to re-extend it at the end of each calendar year. If no affirmative action is taken, it will extend for an additional 12 months. Well, a commercial landlord doesn't like that, because they like five-year leases or 10-year leases, or something that doesn't end absolutely at the end of the calendar year. However, the thought came up, and I will credit Chris with this, of perhaps helping, getting some help with our public facilities authority, which is what Sandy Springs did to overcome this same issue with respect to a multi-year lease. And that is, you can sort of do the same thing by having the landlord actually enter into a lease with not the city, but with the public facilities authority, which is not bound by that same restriction. The public facilities authority would then in turn enter into a sublease by way of an IGA with the City of Milton. And that's a way to basically accomplish the same thing, but it does not offend the multi-year services and lease language of the Georgia code. In, in thinking this through, though, one of the things that your PFA did not have, which Sandy Springs PFA did have, which was the ability of the council to serve as the PFA. In other words, you would actually become and appoint yourself to become the membership of the PFA, which is quite common. There's many authorities in Georgia which basically are the membership of the local governing authorities. That's not uncommon at all. And of course, then there was an effort, and you all passed a resolution requesting that the local delegation makes its request with the General Assembly by way of a local enactment in February, and they in fact delivered on that. And so now, the local law for the PFA in Milton allows... PFA in Milton allows you to be the membership of the PFA. And from my perspective, that makes doing this a lot easier, because now I've got a body that will know automatically what's going on. I don't have to assemble you and get you up to speed. You already know what's going on. You can then be assembled, and you can work through this transaction fairly easily. So my request of you is, is that if you're willing to go forward with this, that you do in fact agree to basically appoint yourselves to the membership of the PFA. That's one of the reasons we're here tonight at this work session, is to basically tell you that's where we are in the process. One wrinkle, of course, I think Chris may have explained this to you during the comments and announcements section in previous meetings, is we have been going through this process of negotiating the lease with our landlord, and then of course, the building sold, right? We talked to you about that. But we don't expect it's going to be a tremendous carpool. We expect that the new owner will do exactly what has been planned the entire time, which is want to pursue the same deal. We were very close. We already had the principal lease negotiated, and we had already begun working on the subleases and the assignment, which is of course what would then result in going down to the City of Milton. And we expect that they will do the same deal. But there are some things that have to fall into place, and the next thing that really needs to fall into place, quite frankly, is we need to activate this new public facilities authority. And the first trigger to that is, is to nominate the members. So if you are comfortable with what I'm talking about, and comfortable with what I'm proposing, what I would recommend that you do, is that you allow me, working with Chris, to prepare a resolution that we'll talk about at the next regular meeting, that will in effect go ahead and appoint the membership of the PFA, and it be each of you. The terms of service run through Terminus with your terms in office. The PFA has perpetual existence. It is basically, I mean, the PFA has very broad powers. I mean, it is a separate sub-agency of the state of Georgia. It's not unlike the City of Milton, it's a lot of powers. But of course, it has no funding mechanism, so that takes away a lot of its ability to act. But a lot of people, when they think about what the PFA does, what these authorities do, what they really do, is they serve as a vehicle for the issuance of revenue bonds. And that's what they really do. But they also have the ability to do interesting things, like be the tenant for City Hall, and then sublease that to the City of Milton to allow a legal result that otherwise wouldn't be legal. So that's a good thing, too. But that's what I'm here to do, is just to set this next chain of event along this critical path in order. And that's going to be to bring a resolution basically nominating each of you to be the respective membership of the PFA. Once you do that, I will then work with you to sort of have the introductory meeting. I was thinking perhaps just some fairly rudimentary, not terribly complicated bylaws. Go ahead and appoint your, the chairman, and the vice chairman, and the secretary. We'll do that, get you all set up and running. We'll register you with the Department of Community Affairs downtown, which is what you have to do. I've set up a host of these. And then once your bylaws are in place, and once you've had your introductory meeting, then I will probably be bringing to the PFA, which will be you, the lease agreement. And we'll talk about the lease agreement, and it may very well be that you approve the lease agreement, and then you also approve an assignment of that lease agreement to the City of Milton. And then you'll vote on that at a subsequent City Council meeting. Having said all that, that's sort of my plan, that's my recommendation to you. That makes good sense, it's good legal sense. This is a very standard way of doing business in local government. Do you have any questions?
Question. You said, basically, it would go hand-in-hand with your term in office.
Correct.
You know, what happens when someone else gets elected, and they did not want to sign up, or is that, are they automatic?
It's a great question, and the answer is, is that the local law modification authorized or enables you to appoint yourself, but you by no means have to appoint yourself. So that new member that comes on and does not want to become the PFA could simply bring to you a recommendation for a nomination, and it could be someone different, and that's fine. I hope that's not what happens, because again, I think ideally from a manageability standpoint, and from an efficiency standpoint, it makes perfect sense to have you all be the PFA, but if they wanted to do something different, they could.
What about additional liability to any, you know, elected official versus if they're not on the PFA?
What do you mean by that, Mr. Mayor?
I mean, are we as elected officials taking on additional personal liability?
No, you're not. No more than you already have, and you're already covered by various insurance policies and things of that nature for conducting your official courses, scope of duty, so I'm not the least bit concerned about that.
I just hate to be, you know, not be the mayor for 15 years and still like be on the hook for making a payment or something.
Question.
Is the reason that we can't sign the lease as a city because of the law, is the law so we won't bind the future council? Is that what the reasoning behind this is?
Exactly. That's why the obligations have to end absolutely at the end of the calendar year, so a new council could ostensibly, you know, start fresh if they wanted to. But of course, in doing transactions, in order to a course of business, that's very challenging for local governments, because a lot of folks, particularly those that own buildings like this, don't want to do business that way.
Question.
Yeah, what?
Couple things. So, the authority can enter into a multi-year lease agreement?
Yes, sir.
And because, and then the authority can sublease, and the city can sublease on a multi-year basis?
They can sub, by way of an intergovernmental agreement, which is specifically called out in Georgia law as a different, yes, sir.
Okay. So that kind of takes care of that part of it?
It papers it, yes, sir.
Okay. The authority does have to have a member that's appointed by each person sitting on council?
Right. The mayor and each member of the city council shall appoint a member to the authorities, the way the law reads. What I'm creating is a construct where each of you would appoint yourself.
And the authority meetings, would those be separate from the council meetings?
That's a great question, and that's going to be up to you and how we set up the bylaws. We could either do it by way of setting up some regular meetings well in advance, or each meeting can be ad hoc. I'll work with you once the PFA assembles on a meeting schedule that makes sense. It would probably make sense for them to run either a little before or a little after your council meetings, so you don't have to assemble. And of course, quite frankly, if you do it that way, to the extent I come to your meetings, that saves you, that saves money for the city. We can get this in, get it done, it's efficient, and be quick. And your PFA meetings should be very short.
Yeah, minimize those legal fees.
Yes, sir. Minimize the fees.
Yes. And lastly, with the public authority, you can also use that authority as a vehicle for financing other things within the city, such as the, I know that was discussed when talking about the different financing options for the public safety facility that we're doing.
And in fact, that's a more common use of the PFA. This is more of a novel, but perfectly legitimate, but a little more novel use.
Right. Okay.
Case. So the city is only allowed or restricted to go into a one-year lease agreement, contract?
Right.
But the authority can go into a multi-year contract? Suppose the city wants to get out of the contract after, say, two years out of a three-year contract, then how is that handled?
You won't be able to do that. The PFA will enter into a lease agreement that is consistent with what the landlord is asking, and then the city of council, Milton, will be on the hook by way of the IGA for the full term of that under the IGA, which you are authorized to do within other government. You can do that, you can bind yourself that way.
Are these meetings subject to the Open Meetings Act?
Great question. Yes, sir. They very much are.
Okay. Any other questions?
I mean, I don't know that we have a whole lot of choice. I mean, landlord is going to, any landlord's going to require a multi-year contract. The only reason we didn't have to worry about this the first time was because the contract was out with actually CH2, so I mean, I don't know that we have a whole lot of choice.
Well said. And quite frankly, getting the PFA up and running anyway, go ahead and getting the membership established may make sense for other reasons.
Okay, is everybody on board?
I'm fine.
Moving forward with that?
Yep, I'm good.
I'll take care.
Okay. During our meeting, if there's no other...
That it?